Six o'clock. Sorry. Alright, so being six o'clock on Wednesday, June twenty, let's say twenty-six, I'll go to item one, call the meeting to auto, we do acquire. So just read the governor's provision allowing the Zoom meetings. The meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to the governor's approval of the supplemental budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without acquiring of the public body physically present at a meeting location to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The language of this of this extension does not make any subsequent changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary meeting provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely. We shall address your questions through the chair of the board or the host who is. Mr. O'Brien. We'd like to note the following participants. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair. We have Ms. Esther Rohans with us this evening and Mr. Stephen Bell, who is this evening. Does anybody else sign that?
Not this time.
We anticipate other members joining us, but at this time we only have the three of us. During the meeting, I would be roll call. The following three twenty town staff with us this evening. Mr. Robert Really, the committee economic development director, Mr. Shannon Brian, the town planner, Ms. Justine Jane, the assistant town planner, and Mr. Stevens Lowery, the building commissioner. At this point, everyone's bikes are muted. The board's next to be unmuted to the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives might should be unmuted. If this is a public hearing and allows for a comment, we ask you to use the chat feature to ask your question. Write us through your name, your address, and your question. The chair of the host will recognize questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the chair of the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and your address before asking a question. Get on the phone, you can dial star, and then raise your hands. I'll go to item two, but we have six, six-thirty this evening. This is a concept plan presentation by Centerline Development to the planning board for a potential project at ninety-six Main Street. So Mr. O'Brien, I'll turn it over to you and to Mr. Really and the opponents. Do you want to introduce them or Mr. Really?
I can introduce them. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Adam Japson, his cousin Brian, and their architect Eric are here to present a concept plan for what they would like to redevelop at ninety-six Main Street. This is a preliminary concept. They have done a presentation to the Historic District Commission. They will, I think, in the near future be formally submitting an application, but as a courtesy to the members and the public, they wanted to opportunity to do this presentation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Adam. You should be able to share your screen, Adam.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Early. I'll go ahead and share my screen now. Sorry, one sec.
Slideshow.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Ryan, it might be easier if you just do it as a slideshow, so we're only seeing one slide at a time. It's on the upper bar. Next to animations.
There we go. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair, members of the board.
You don't have it yet.
Oh, it's not sharing?
No, you just go to slideshow on the top. Or you see your homes, where it's underlined home, that top bar, go over to the right slideshow.
Adam, you see where it's home and then insert and then draw at the top?
It looks like he froze.
Yeah.
He's not moving.
Let me shoot him a text.
Do you have the presentation?
I do have a copy of it.
We can stop him from sharing and somebody else can put it up.
Yeah, let me do that.
You could do it the way you had. It's just very disconcerting when you see all the other slides at the same time.
I need to keep your. I need to have it up.
Shane, just while they're doing it, were you having trouble hearing me for a few minutes? Am I better?
Yeah, I yeah, I just want to make sure you're as clear as possible.
Did you hear everything I read in there?
We hear you better now. Yeah. All right, we can see it.
Play from start.
Is that a better view?
Yeah.
All good.
And is Adam back on or no?
I don't, I don't see Adam now.
To you, Brian.
Give me one second.
Just a reminder, you only have the six-thirty.
Alright, so I'll just go through a little bit about my background while we're waiting for Adam to join. But Adam and I are cousins. Adam has a strong background in engineering and construction. My background, I grew up in Bridgewater on Vernon Street, where I lived for the first, for twenty-two years. Graduated from Bridgewater-Ranham in nineteen ninety-six before attending Bentley College, where I got a degree in accounting and then continued for an MBA. After college, I pursued CPA, CPA license and worked for the past twenty to twenty-five years in accounting and finance. As part of Centerline Development, I'm responsible for all the financials. I do all of the underwriting for our projects. And, you know, after, after college and after working, met my wife and had kids, and we actually moved back to Bridgewater, where we spent three years before I ended up moving to Atlanta, Georgia, where I presently reside. See if he's on. Is he on now? Anybody know?
Brian, I'm here. Sorry about that.
Adam, do you want to go background?
Yes, please. Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Adam Jasper. I live at fifty-three Thomas Park in South Boston with my wife and our one-year-old daughter. I grew up in Bridgewater. Lived there from the time I was born until I graduated from college. I attended Bridgewater-Ranham, graduated from VR in two thousand and seven, and attended Mass Maritime afterward. I studied marine engineering while at Mass Maritime and after graduation, I went to work offshore as marine engineer, primarily working in oil and gas. I worked offshore for about eight years before starting Centerline Development in two thousand and eighteen. My sisters both live in Bridgewater. They're both raising their families there. My wife is also a graduate of VR, and both of her sisters and their husbands are living in Bridgewater and raising their families there as well. My father lived in Bridgewater and remained in the home I grew up in until two thousand and eighteen. He eventually sold and now lives in East Bridgewater. But Bridgewater is very near and dear to us, and my wife and I hope to eventually move back to Bridgewater and raise our family there as well.
Eric?
My name is Eric Zacherson. I'm an architect. I work with the contact route of Charlestown. We have a resident, primarily residential practice, and we are involved in about a hundred residential projects across Massachusetts every year. That'll be the architect for this.
So just to give a little background on the property at ninety-six Main Street, and we did present this to Mr. Moore and the Historical Commission. The property was built in eighteen ninety-five. It's, it's a little over four thousand square feet of living space. Gross square footage is a little higher than that, around forty-five hundred square feet, I believe. The lot is just shy of an acre. It's thirty-nine thousand square feet, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine square feet, to be exact. The property was previously owned by Malden Real Estate Development LLC. When we had offered on the property, had been on market for six hundred and sixty-one days prior to us putting it under agreement. Our next slide, Brian. The previous owners, Malden Real Estate Development, they also own a property in Central Square, forty-eight to fifty Central Square. And as you can see, at ninety-six Main and at the Central Square property, the previous owner had no intentions of putting money into these properties or rehabbing them. You know, had we not purchased this property, it would likely have continued to sit and fall deeper into disrepair. Currently, well, most recently, the property was leased to students. It was essentially a frat house. We did pull police reports from the Bridgewater Police Department. It's been a very active house for the police department. I think that's no surprise to most. It needs extensive renovation, far beyond any fiscal viability for us as a single family in the Bridgewater market. Also, being a single family on such a large piece of land, it's clearly not the highest and best use of the property, being in the CBD and the downtown area. Additionally, the building is riddled with asbestos and lead. We have a quote in hand to do an asbestos abatement. It was an estimate that did not, we had not opened the walls yet, so it's very possible this estimate could climb significantly, but the quote in hand at the moment is for thirty thousand dollars, and the lead abatement's estimated over forty thousand dollars. Here's a, just a existing conditions plan that Silver Engineering had prepared for us. Shows the property situated almost right in the middle, or the building situated almost right in the middle of the, of the property. Bridgewater Market right now for single families, average days on market is about twenty-eight days. This property, a single family sat on the market for six hundred and sixty-one days. Clearly, nobody was interested in this, in this property. Average sale price for a single family in Bridgewater right now is six hundred and forty-one thousand. We purchased this from Malden Real Estate for eight ninety-nine. The majority of the comps, when running comps against this house, majority of those comps consisted of homes in subdivisions with attached garage parking. So Brian and I ran several exercises to see if it were possible to keep the existing structure. And we analyzed it as a single-family reno, cutting it up into four condos and cutting it up into apartments. As a single family, given current lending rates and an estimated repair cost at two hundred dollars per square foot, we were netting a loss of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. As condos, we projected doing four one-thousand-square-foot condos, two beds, two baths. Given the same rate, a slightly higher price per square foot, given multifamily construction requires fire protection, demising walls, et cetera. The cost to construct multifamily is more expensive than single-family. We had a higher sellout, of course, but we still had a net loss of over two hundred thousand dollars. As a four-unit rental property, similar unit size and bed bath count as condos, we had a total project cost of one point nine four two million. That would net us negative cash flow for at least the first six years and an estimated twenty-six years to recoup that investment. It has a debt service coverage ratio of point eight nine. There's, there's no bank that I'm aware of that will lend with a debt service coverage ratio below one point two five. I, I, I think it would be impossible to get this financed as a multifamily. We, we looked at options of keeping the existing structure and building around it, but we couldn't find any, any design that would work, that would allow to us to maintain a reasonable amount of green space, have a reasonable amount of parking, and, and it wouldn't be aesthetically pleasing or fit the guidelines of the new zoning. Ultimately, we did research the state grant funding, and I called the Mass Historical Commission. The property is not eligible for any grant funding, and anybody who wishes to follow up on that can do so calling this number or you can go to the state website. Now, based on the new zoning, at eighteen units per acre, using that ratio, this property would be eligible for sixteen units by right with the potential for density bonuses through maintaining the existing structure, adding solar, or doing affordable units. But we don't feel that that's the, the right avenue. The requirement, or, or to maintain this existing structure, the cost to do so is so substantial, it would be very difficult to make the deal pencil still. And if we were to maintain the existing structure, we would likely have to add a larger superstructure to it, which I don't think will be contextually appealing or aesthetically pleasing for the town, and it won't meet the, the new design, design criteria as laid out in the design standards for the new zoning. So, given that, we would like to introduce the, the new proposed site plan, which we have here on the slide. So, we are proposing a mixture of condos and townhomes. The condos would be up front along Main Street. Building one would be a mixed-use and contain one retail unit. Building six would be three condos. So building one would be one retail and five condos. We then have a series of townhomes, all with garage parking behind it. On the other side, we're proposing multiple two families, four two families with garage parking and two more townhomes with garage parking. There's a total of forty-five parking spaces currently. And that should be sufficient for the twenty-six total proposed units. Here's a breakdown of the unit count. It's a mixture of two beds, two baths, one bed, one and a half bath, three bed, two and a half bath. We do have a couple four beds in there as well, four beds, two and a half bath. They're all fairly large units. Looking at the economic impact, Brian and I estimated, if this project were approved, that we estimated about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year in additional property tax revenue for the town. Given the town's capital improvement obligation and needs for infrastructure, we think this is definitely a great start. The town coming into compliance with the NPTA Communities Act and making itself eligible for, for the grant funding will also help meet that obligation. The social impact in town for this project. It's obviously no secret that the downtown of Bridgewater has been on the decline for a while. All of our, my, our family, our friends that live in town, they're all around our age, they're all raising their families there. They've all expressed discontent with the direction the town's been going in and the way it looks. People want to see restaurants, they want places to go. But to incentive, incentivize businesses to come in, there needs to be housing to drive traffic. Building multifamily housing downtown within walking distance of retail, restaurant, bars is, is the way to incentivize those businesses to come into town. So in conclusion, Brian and I, we don't take tearing down a structure lightly. We have extensive experience renovating old structures. Most of our projects have been in Boston, in the Dorchester, South Boston, Jamaica Plain neighborhoods. We do take pleasure in restoring old structures, but we could not find a fiscally viable way of doing so on this project. So we hope the board will consider the economic hardship that we're presented with on this structure and the fact that we would like to bring quality new homes to the town of Bridgewater. We are proposing to utilize solar, all-electric appliances, heating, and hot water. Additionally, the homes would be within walking distance of downtown and all that the CBD and S will offer in the future. And that, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, guys. What, and has any, have any of the board members joined us, Shane? I can't see all of the.
Yeah, the only board member, the only board members we do not have tonight is Ted Haley and MJ Spagon.
Mr. McDonald has joined us.
That's correct.
So at this point, if anybody from the board would like to ask questions or give feedback, please feel free to do so. Anybody from the board?
Yes, sir. You're saying this project presents you with economic hardship. What was the initial goal in mind when you purchased the property then? I mean, surely you had a perceived pretty extensive renovation costs.
I don't know if Adam dropped, but the hardship would be if we kept the building in the manner it's in. The original plan was to demolish the building, and then we had the meeting with the Historic Commission, where we received a lot of pushback on trying to preserve the building. That's where the hardship would come in, and that wasn't the intention when we first purchased the project.
Okay, I understand now. So you weren't, you weren't planning to keep it in the first place?
We were planning to demo it.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Brian and Adam, thanks for coming in. You know, generally, I, I like the concept. Just a couple of quick questions. So can you go back to the, the site plan? So they, and I gotta move my, so they the green, that eleven hundred and three square feet, is that, the green is, is commercial, and those two blue boxes are residential on ground floor, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, yeah, Main Street's on the right side of this, and the intent would be that there would be two kind of three-story-ish building, three-story buildings facing Main Street, kind of the, the gateway, the entrance to the project. And that green would be retail or commercial space at the ground floor of the one on the right. And then the other two, the blue square rectangles there would most likely be grouped to accessible units. We understand there's a, a need for highly accessible units within the within the neighborhood. So we'd originally talked a little bit about doing a lot of townhouses, but realized that we need some kind of ground floor, flat accessible units. And so those two, the eight sixty-four and the ten, one thousand eighty-five square foot units there are intended to be very accessible group two units. And then above them, there would be, there would be condo, flat condos on the, above that, on those two buildings, while the rest of the buildings are townhouses.
I'm trying to flip to the zoning. So just looking at the zoning, I think, you know, personally, I'd like to see both those buildings, all the ground floor be commercial. It says that, you know, there's no residential allowed on the first floor of buildings, and, you know, but it can be accommodated in another spot. So I understand the townhouses are back. Obviously, you're not going to put, you know, commercial back there, and I like the idea of the townhouses. Just thinking like that Main Street, where we're trying to create that street frontage storefront, I think those two buildings having commercial on the first floor would be, would be beneficial. And then I just, just one other comment. You know, obviously, the site is the work. I mean, I see the tandem parking on the, on the the side behind unit ninety. I don't know how that works, you know, as far as can people pack in the driveway? Is there enough space there? It looks like there's. You know, so I mean, obviously, the site plan is the work, but then where it's a twenty-six units, and that's, that's assuming all the density bonuses, and then you said sixteen, so wouldn't, wouldn't the calculation be more like twenty-three? Anyway, so couldn't those, couldn't those other spaces become commercial?
So the, the current challenge with that strategy is that per the state building code, if we only had retail at the ground floor, we would have to introduce an elevator in each building so that we could make the, as a multifamily building that has more than three, has three or more units, we would have to have an elevator to get people up to the second floor. And as a kind of a six-unit building and a three-unit building, that, that might not be like financially viable. So the current, that's why the current plan shows ground floor residential units. But like everything else, we're here for comment. We're here to think about those things. So we appreciate that, and we'll, we'll take that back as part, as part of our kind of analysis.
Mixed use and trying to create like, you know, vibrant street fronts. So I think that and we, and we just got an opinion, a local developer, I think, just got an opinion, Mr. Solari from the Architectural Access Board, that they did not need an elevator. Is that true?
Yeah, that's true. He was having two floors because of the amount of units he kept under. In the, in the building itself, he wasn't required to do an elevator. And I know originally, he was talking, I think, originally totaled six to eight units, and he still got approval from the access board that because of the amount of units, he did not have to have accessible units. Because it, because you're going building by building, you know, under the building code, it's, you don't do the, the whole project, you do building.
No, I, I appreciate that. I'd love to see that ruling because my understanding is three or more units requires at least one accessible, group one accessible unit. But perhaps.
So maybe that's where you lose a couple of units in that building and do that, because the math, the math doesn't support twenty-six units anyway, supports with twenty-three.
It depends on which, how we count the, the various bonuses.
The max would be twenty-six, right? Twenty-six per acre? And if you're thirty-nine thousand, two point nine one, that's twenty-three? So I'm just saying, what I'm saying is just, and I'm not to debate it, but I'd like to see those two front ones. Those two front ones, you know, retail, maybe you're gonna lose a couple of units there, that's all.
And we can, we can certainly look at that. Absolutely. I don't want to argue against it. I would want to hear what's important to, to you all.
I'm just accurate, Mr. Driscoll's sentiment on that one. I think that would be an improvement as well.
And I think, you know, the site success is the work. I mean, you got to work on the drainage, the open space, all the other requirements in the designing, but I like the idea of the mixed use and townhouses, obviously, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Rohans?
Where is, um? Yes.
You, you want, I, do you want to add anything?
I was endeared with that building, but after seeing the presentation today, I'm and seeing all the costs that it would take to restore, I'd have to be on board with this, so I just thank the team for providing this demonstration today.
And just, is there a proposal for dumpsters anywhere?
So, yeah, currently, that, yeah, the little yellow areas to be an enclosed trash room. So, yeah, currently that, yeah, the little yellow areas to be an enclosed trash room. For that, for the whole process, so that as people are leaving, yeah, so that everybody, as they're leaving, uh. For the day, whatever, could drop their trash on the way out, uh, of the, uh, of the site.
And, you know, I'll just, I, I, conceptually, you know, if, if the building can't be saved. And can't be added to, I like, I like stuff, but just does that, how much space is there between the two buildings they proposed?
In the front?
No, something like building from four point one to the building across, you know, if I'm, I'm looking at four point one.
At least twenty feet, and that has something to do with the, uh, bringing a fire truck onto the site and being able to, uh. To address, uh, a crisis like that.
Um, if somebody left a car in the driveway, would they be able to do that or no? And would, and would the people be back out?
Yeah, it would be really hard. The, for those tandem spaces that you mentioned, the intention is that. Those two tandem spaces would belong to one unit above, and they would have to manage it. Um, if they, if somebody parked in behind that, um. Yeah, the fire truck would have a, a difficult time accessing it, and that's part of the reason we added a couple of guest spaces away at the rear of the property.
But just looking, just looking at that now, so if I, if I'm in a unit with my wife or roommate or whatever. Those are my two spots. So if I'm leaving in the morning, somebody else would have to move a car in and out, is that the way it's designed?
Yes, that, for those, for those, uh, tenants, yes. The other townhouses have side by side, but those, um, two family buildings at four point one, four point two, four point three, and four point four. Would be tandem, but to the same owner.
And maybe, you know, if you gotta use, lose three units, maybe it makes those like to cross the street, so it's the parking side by side, you know what I mean? I just think that might be a challenge for people, but, I mean, it's up to you guys. All right, any other comments?
Do you have any conceptual design of what these buildings are gonna look like yet, or?
Very rough, um, but we are thinking it, it, they're kind of slope-proof. Um, you know, three and a half st- story, obviously, we wanna be three and a half stories, forty-five feet to match the zoning compliance. But, um, we're, we're thinking they're gable roofs, um. Probably not with dormers, but something that, that, um, feels a little bit more contextual with the neighborhood rather than, um. Than boxes or, or flat roofs, uh, but pretty conceptual. And also welcome to feedback on that.
And I don't mean to be quick, but we have a public hearing scheduled for six thirty, so do we have any comments? Any other board comments, questions, staff comments, questions?
No, just on the town end, um, with the new zoning, um, at some point, if the applicant decides to pursue this. Uh, they'll be filing, uh, with this planning board under the CBDS district, um, so. Um, we're happy to, uh, assist on any matter, um, moving forward once, uh, formally submitted.
Right. All right, thank you, thank you guys for coming in, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on, item three. We have a preliminary subdivision. Uh, this is a continuation, this is eighty-four, uh, South Street, map seventy-five lot one, this is not a public hearing, sorry, it's a public meeting. Um, this is a preliminary subdivision for a three lot subdivision with waivers in residential city. This was continued from June, this, twenty twenty-four. Um, Mr. Diaz, you with us this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
Um, staff, before we start giving updates, so I just came and saw your letter and. In the packet, but is there anything else you wanna add?
No, we received a updated letter, I don't, I don't believe Mr., um. Uh, town engineer, uh, Greg Tansey is available, but he did provide, uh, an updated letter. Um, as well as we provided a, a updated memo as well, um, so, um. We're, let the applicant, uh, present the changes from the last meeting. I know that. The applicant was available at the last meeting, but decided to continue due to, um. Uh, a lack of sizable quorum, um, so I'm happy to let Mr. Diaz proceed.
All right, good eyes, go ahead.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the record, Eric Diaz, Registered Professional Engineer, Strongpoint Engineering. Representing the applicant tonight. Um, I know you folks have a, a sizable agenda, so I'll be very quick, um. And just share my screen briefly. It should be coming up, uh, just to refresh everybody's memory. So this is the, the proposed preliminary subdivision that we're looking at, it's located at eight eighty-four South Street. Uh, very close to Jennifer Circle and Winter Street. Um, we had had a conversation or discussion last time about this, noting that it's a preliminary, so it's really not a hundred percent binding. Uh, but we did, um, outline some anticipated waivers that we were seeking, and most of the conversation. Revolved around one of those waivers, and that was to reduce the required diameter of the right-of-way turnaround. Under your bylaw, the diameter is required to be a hundred and thirty, uh, foot, and we propose to reduce it to a hundred. Um, and we noted a couple of things that it has been done at other places in, in town, and that with this size road. We're not required to construct a full cul-de-sac, uh, we are required to construct a hammerhead. Um, and that hammerhead fits very well within the reduced diameter cul-de-sac, uh, right away circle, excuse me. Um, so the argument i- i- that we put forth was simply. You know, from a, a, a purely geometry standpoint, we don't need a hundred and thirty feet, right? It, it becomes somewhat wasted space. Uh, from a practicality standpoint. This reduced diameter also allows us to have what we believe is a better layout for the site. This allows us to have a layout that has three single-family homes that are all of reasonable size for the neighborhood, they all fit the property very well. They keep with the aesthetic, um, of the surrounding neighborhood, and one of the things that we discussed was that. An alternative to this, if we were required to go with a hundred and thirty-foot, um. Diameter is the plan that I'm pulling up now. And this shows a hundred and thirty-foot diameter and just a two-lot division rather than three. We would still keep the existing house, um, and the thing to note here is that the newly proposed law. Would be of enough size that we could proceed with a duplex application under a special permit. So why is that pertinent to this discussion? And that really just comes down to the idea of density. Right? Either way, with either option, we're looking at three dwelling units on ninety thousand square feet. Which comes to roughly thirty thousand square feet per unit, um, which is a hundred and sixty percent bigger. Than what is required for a single family in this location.
Mr. Banks, any one question I have? You, you know, we have the first subdivision, we have the lot box, the building box.
Yep.
Is that, does that fit on both these lots at the setback lines?
It does, yes. It's not shown on this plan, but it fits.
So it fit, so it does fit, it does fit where the existing houses?
Yeah, it does, yes. Yeah, we just rotated to face the existing, um, the proposed right-of-way, and it, it, it fits. Um, but, but anyway, so. Excuse me, um, so that, that's our general argument. We think that the, the small reduction. Um, in the size of the, the cul-de-sac, um, the waiver for that kind of justifies the layout of the site. Um, being a little bit more advantageous, fitting with the neighborhood, maybe a little bit better. We feel that three individual, single families here are a better product. Um, a- and again, it's been done in the past, from a practicality standpoint, there's no reason not to do it. Um, et- et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the rest of what we discussed was with regard to a couple of other waivers, one that we've actually walked away from. Uh, we mistakenly requested a waiver for our site lighting. Um, that we now have determined, and Mr. Driscoll, you made the comment that we don't need it on a, on a project like this. Uh, we can go and get away with post lights, which is what we suggested anyway. Um, and we did receive some comments from Mr. Tansey, uh, that we did respond to. Most of those comments were just cautions for moving to a definitive phase. Uh, things that he would be looking for as far as stormwater design and things like that are concerned. Um, and the only other comment was to add a building box and setback lines to the lot showing the existing house, which we've done to illustrate that it works.
Uh, can you, can you show us the belt, how the building box would lay out on that other plan? Do we have the depth to show?
Uh, I don't have the AutoCAD open in front of me right now, but the building box would.
It's on, it's on that plan, but on the, on the, on the single lot plan, can you show that?
Yeah, I'm just checking, I'm just checking the eighty by sixty.
Eighty by sixty, yeah. Add the setback line.
Eighty by sixty, and if we come in here, uh, the building box, uh, what are we for width through here? I don't have the exact figure, but we definitely have sixty feet through here that we could fit that building box in.
Uh, Eric, I, I, I have a question for you.
You have eight, you do have eighty feet in depth from that setback line?
Um, from the setback line?
Right, the building box is eighty at sixty at the setback line. I just, I just wanna make sure that this is viable before we consider the waivers, you know what I mean? If it, if it's viable, then. I think, I think one way, if it's not viable, I think another way, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, understood. Um, I, I don't have the AutoCAD open in front of me. Um, if you give me a minute, I can probably do the math and figure this out.
Eric, uh, I guess, Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a inquiry.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Diaz, have, have you explored an A and R for this property?
Meaning, how so?
Uh, an appro- uh, an approval not required, I know you know, uh, uh, within looking if there was sufficient frontage for the lot on South Street. As well as for an adjacent property on South Street.
I, I see what you're saying, so, um, are you saying this two-lot plan without this and just going with a?
Yeah, just from a, I've a fin- I guess a financial perspective.
There's not enough frontage chain, right? There's only.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just asking the question, i- i- asking the question why you'd look to, yeah, pursue that rather than, I guess, a frontage waiver.
It's not two hundred feet, right?
Yeah, so we've got a hundred and twenty-five feet here, we've got a hundred and eighty feet there, so that comes out to about three hundred feet. Um, and it has enough footage, uh, give me just half a second here.
I don't think that's right, because you're getting a frontage for that existing dwelling now on the cul-de-sac.
Right, right.
So it's not, it's not a hundred and twenty-five there, but.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Driscoll's right on that.
I just want, you know, I, so personally, I have, I have an opinion, but I wanna verify. That that's before I, you know. The way I look at it is, personally, I like the two lot subdivision, the, the, uh, the single-family subdivision better, I think it's more in keeping, but. In order to grant waivers, they have to be in the public good, right? So a couple of things, I wanna make sure, one, that you do have a, a subdivision that complies. And then, number two, I wouldn't be able to, you know, I, I, I just, I think it's important that we have, make sure that it complies before we consider any waivers, that's all. Or you could make it comply.
Sure, sure, no, understood. Um, I'd have to get my scale out to check on the, the width of this one, but I believe it fits. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't have the bylaw in front of me, so I'm going through memory. Um, I'm not certain that the box has to be fully within setbacks, is that correct? And Mr. Solari's on the call.
No, it has to start at the setback line, it sits at the setback line. I can pull it, I can pull it, right?
Believe Pat's correct.
Yes, start the setback line, okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's the set at the set, at the setback line, sixty by eighty box.
All right, so we got twenty through here, so we would need just to just be a forty, right? So if we're looking at this, and I don't have it dimensioned out, but if this is a side yard, this is a twenty. So front yard is here, do I have forty feet between here and the back? Yeah, I definitely do.
Are we still looking up the subdivision?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. Actually, think some definitions, isn't it?
Uh, I think that's what we define as, I've, under frontage or setbacks.
Building box. Yeah, so it's, uh, lot shall generally be configured in uniform geometric shapes favoring side lot intersection with sideline at right angles wherever practicable. As measured from the required front building setback line. Extending rear width at a distance of sixty feet in the residential C and D districts. The lot width shall not be less than eighty-five feet.
You're reading the definition of lot building area, Pat?
No, 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 the, the build, the, right, as measured for the wide front setback line, the box should be sixty. Six, should, shall be a distance of sixty feet in C and D by eighty-five. So eighty-five by sixty box needs to fit at the setback line.
So off of the frontage on this line here.
Off, yeah, that's a thirty-five foot setback line in that zone, right?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, so if you take that setback and you double that, just visually on this. You can see that we have the room starting there to go all the way back with a sixty-foot setback, that would be doubling, it would be seventy. Uh, we can certainly add the box to the plan without an issue.
So, go ahead, Mr., that, that's just a question I had, you can continue if there's anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Diaz.
Uh, no, I've got nothing, um, that's all I've got.
Any board comments or questions? Any board opinions or thoughts on the, the, the two plans and the?
So wasn't there any other waivers that they were asking for?
Uh, if I may through the chair, the other waivers that we were asking for, there was one. Where your bylaw requires at the end of a cul- um, the right-of-way bulb that we maintain. A easement, uh, for future expansion. Uh, so we've requested a waiver to not require that, simply because there's no opportunity for future expansion of this road, uh, doesn't need to happen. Um, the other one that we asked for was a waiver to not be required to plant street trees within the right-of-way. Um, only on the merits that this is going to be private in perpetuity. Um, and we felt it might be appropriate to leave it to the homeowners, uh, that would eventually live there to select what they wanted for landscaping. Uh, the other one was for, to waive a requirement for site lighting that, I think we talked about, we withdrew because we don't need it.
Okay, any board thoughts on either plan, or, or preference of either plan, or reason for granting the waivers?
Um, I do have a preference for the, uh, single-family units, I think, I maybe, I think both are fine, but that, that would be my preference.
Any other comments?
So I, I, I have, I think that the one that's up with it now is a little bit nicer of a layout, so I, I really don't have a. A problem with the first waiver of bringing it down to a hundred. Less asphalt, but there's more asphalt going in, um. I, we are right with the other way for the expansion, but as, as far as the street, street trees go, I, I would, I would not go to that. That they need to go in.
Well, I think, I mean, so, so Shane, just help me understand, this is preliminary, so we're not approving any waivers this evening. We're not bound to commit to approving any waivers, correct?
No, you can approve or approve the plan with consideration of conditions for what we wanna see in a future definitive subdivision plan.
So, so this is how, so this is how I feel, right? Cause I, I'm, I'm struggling with this one. Personally, I think that the. As, as Mr. McDonald said, and Mr. Geller said. I think the two single-family homes is more in keeping, I went down there today with Jennifer Circle and the. The single families around it and whatnot, so I, I think it's more in keeping with that, right? So I think if I had a preference. I would, I would, a- 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 and they can demonstrate. that the cul-de-sac is a hundred and thirty feet diameter, and they can demonstrate they have the, the duplex lot and the single-family lot as right, so to speak. I'd, I'd want to see the boxes on that plan, sixty by eighty-five. So if, assuming they can do that, and I would be open to the waiver, but I think, I think if you read our rules and regulations, right, so if I go into the rules and regulations, right? And we go into waiver. Says, says no waiver of subdivision, let's see, let's see, strict compliance with the requirements of these rules and regs may be waived only when in the judgment of the board, such actions in the public interest and not inconsistent with public good. The board may require such alternative condi- conditions that will serve to the same objective, so. I just want to make sure that, you know, we have no grading plan in front of us. We don't have a hot line table. Um, if, if the one lot subdivision was built, that house would probably be much closer to the street and not behind the house, um, Jennifer Circle, and not behind the house that went to the street. Um, so I think that, you know, you know, personally, I like the two single-family lots with the waiver, assuming we can demonstrate compliance with that, that first plan, the boxes and everything else. But in order for me to vote on that waiver of a hundred feet and put those two houses behind existing houses, obviously, we need to see more, you know, grading plan to make sure it doesn't impact those two houses in any way. And we'd have to hear, you know, the point of, the point of subdivision approval in the public hearing is to hear from the public, so I think if I heard from the public, there are these adverse issues or, or things we haven't thought of, or it really does impact, I mean, it's not in the public good, then I wouldn't vote for the waiver. So I, I don't know how to leave it, but, I mean, personally, I think we need to have a public hearing on it. I think we need to listen for the public and de- and determine if it's in the public good. And just because I like it doesn't mean the name is on the issues or valid concern, you know? Hey, one else?
I think you pretty much hit the nail on the head there, yeah.
I mean, it's my choice and everything met requirements of the other, I'd, I'd vote for it, but I, I just, I think we really need to hear from the public and make sure it's in the public good, that's all.
Uh, understood, Mr. Chairman, I, um, like we said, the preliminary plans are non-binding. Uh, they're a way for us to sort of take the temperature of the board, for lack of a better way to put it. Um, that's why we come back with the definitive when we prove things like stormwater and things like that, and those are still along the same lines as the comments that Mr. Tanti made. Um, so certainly, if we couldn't prove all those things, the board would be under no obligation to approve the definitive plan regardless of what it had to say about the preliminary plan at this stage. Um, so those are, those are well noted concerns.
I think, I think, I think my feeling on that is, is I'm believing that you can fit, fit, fit those boxes on there at the, at the setback line without seeing it, so. Um, I, I don't want to see that as part of the submitted as well, hey, here's what we could do to justify, but we want to justify the waiver by, by this, you know?
Sure, and, and that's a, a perfectly valid thing to identify at this stage, so we can come back with it if and when we come back with a definitive.
Any other board comments at this point? Okay, so, Mr. O'Brien, we're not really going to vote for this, right?
No, we're vote, this is a, this is a vote, a, a yay or nay or yay with conditions, um, similar to other preliminary subdivision plans, um. With approval, it gives the applicant an opportunity to submit for a definitive subdivision where we utilize a timeline differently than if they submitted just a definitive subdivision plan. Um, but we can approve or deny with any sort of suggestions to proceed, um. Hearing, hearing from you, Mr. Chair, it seems that you, you, you have concerns for waivers, but through the public hearing process, you want to kind of see, um, what kind of impact that could be as well as, um.
Well, well, two things, like, you know, us looking at it right now, we don't live in that area, right? We don't know the impacts that, that may happen until we hear from the public, so I think, I think, you know, so first of all, this is not a public hearing, so we don't need to close the public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
So, so then, i- if we, when, when we vote on this, we, we should add some conditions, so I mean, I think what I would like to see is that first condition is, is that as a right plan, without waivers, needs to demonstrate that, hey, we can do it, right? You know, it's there leaving space, you know, that, then, I, I'm looking, you know, I think the ways of justifying the waivers, hey, they could do it this way, but it's going to look a lot nicer this way, it's going to be, house is going to be off the street, they're going to need more upkeep and with enable, I mean, I think those are all the reasons for, for a waiver, right? But I, that's, that's my opinion, and I want to make sure that they, you know, so we have, hey, they, they can do this anyway, we just flip the units up and, and put them through the back after all, I think that's, that's fun.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the benefit of a preliminary subdivision plan is if that they submit us a definitive subdivision plan, we'll just see them again and say the same things.
But I would like to see that one lot, that two lot subdivision versus the three lot that they, they showed without the boxes on it, I'd like to see that as, hey, we can comply, but we're just looking at doing it a different way, that's all. And then, and then I think the waivers would be, you know, any waivers will be contingent upon the public hearing process, you know? Even though, even though the board expressed that their preferences, you know, the longer road with the, the, the two houses, I mean, that could change in, in the the public hearing process, and I just don't want to bind us to any decision that we could hear some, we could hear some valid testimony that could change our opinion on, on that waiver, that's all.
Or, or better yet, beyond, uh, public opinion, uh, talking about erosion control, test pits, et cetera, et cetera, there's, there's other things that.
Is there anything else we'd want to add for conditions if we decided to vote for that, and I guess we're voting for the three lot as opposed to the two lot, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that was the originally submitted lot, the by right lot came into effect, I would say afterwards, but I'm assuming the, the applicant's looking to proceed with the, uh, the three lot subdivision as, um, as indicated in the agenda.
That is correct, we only provided the detail of the, um, the two lot, uh, to illustrate that, you know, we could, the density would be the same and as supplemental information, not to override the current proposal.
And just to be clear, this, this, this discussion is based on you updating that and demonstrating that you can be compliant with the boxes, et cetera.
Yes, when we come back with a definitive, we will include that in the package to justify the request for the, the, the formal request for waivers.
Okay, but I, you might want to do that first, just to make, I mean, obviously keep us in the loop, because if you can't do that, you know, I don't know if, if you can justify the waiver, you know what I mean, so, that's. All right, anything else that we want to discuss from the board that?
Um, I'll just go back to something Mr. Geller said earlier about the, uh, the tree waiver, um, while I actually do, uh, personally agree with Mr. Diaz that I would like to do my own landscaping if I was to purchase a property, I think that argument is a little too general, uh. You could argue the same for any project to get out of tree planting costs. Uh, so I, I think I would also be unlikely to grant that waiver, so they might want to look into incorporating street trees into their design.
I would agree. Okay, anything else? So updated as a right plan, um, you know, no, no commitment to the waivers, no full of public hearing, uh, no street trees, uh, no street tree waiver at this point, and, and I know, maybe we change that too if we get some compelling reason in the, in the public hearing, but um, just to give you some direction, I think that's, is that, is that it? From the board, anything else?
Nothing for me at this time.
Think I can cover that all in a memo.
Right, and then, um, all right, so if there's nothing else, does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, sure, how would we, um, how would we phrase this, Shane, because it's not a, like a.
Um, we'd be, we'd be approving, uh, the preliminary subdivision as presented, um, with the conditions noted, um, of the, uh, waivers of the public good. Um, well, not waiver, waiving public good, but, um, looking i- into, um, the comments made here, uh, about waivers, um, as well as, uh, looking at the three lot subdivision, um, presentation as a preference, um. So take that as you may.
Does there need to be, I'm hoping to go back to that plan for a minute?
Uh, yeah, can we just a half a sec?
Hold on, I'm just, I'm looking at the rules and regulations for one of them.
You talking, what, the drainage?
No, but is, is the, what's the clear separation between streets?
For between curb cuts?
A hundred and twenty-five feet, does, does that meet that, or is those streets too close?
We did a hundred and thirty center line and center line.
On, on both plans?
Uh, the street hasn't moved on the other plan.
No, no, on the convention.
The duplex plan, excuse me, excuse me, sorry. Um, stand by. Yeah, find it.
Alignment of streets, intersections of residential streets and sub-collective streets.
Yep, um, it's not labeled on this plan, it appears to be in the same location, but why don't we add that to the things that need to be proven when we come back?
Yeah. All right, yeah, so, well, I'm, I'm just looking, because I'm looking at that. All right.
Yeah, anything that wouldn't formally match our subdivision rules and regulations would have to be requested waiver.
Yeah, I'm awful, though, I mean, I'm, I'm awful of waivers, you know, to make a better project, I just, I just want to make sure that you can do it another way first, and then if there's a better way to do it, that's why we grant the waivers, you know what I mean?
Yeah, understood.
If, if there's, if there's nothing there, then we need to make sure it's, you know, we, we just need to make sure it's in the public good, so I think that we want to see that, you know, you can get the boxes on there, you meet the, um, page forty-eight two, it said, I, I, item two on page forty-eight, alignment of streets, um. What's the third?
I would say just, I would just, if, I guess, Mr. Chair, just general compliance with our subdivision rules and regulations, and and then looking at the waivers presented to us, um, in terms of, I guess, you know, we're looking from a, a more public hearing standpoint on terms of some of the waivers requested here.
Just the compliance plan and then, and then, um, and, and the plan, that's all, okay, so, so add this on the line to that, okay? All right, anything else, you, you have those, Chen, pretty much, what we, the four things we talked about, the trees, the bu- the bu- the building box, the.
Yeah, building box, center line, um, talking about just generally the street trees. And then the, uh, in, interest in the, in public good for a public hearing process, so, yeah, I covered those.
All right, um, so we have those, we have those conditions that we discussed, is there a any more discussion on it from the board, or does somebody want to make a commit, uh, a, a, a motion? Mr. Mr. McDonald, you were working on the motion.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot, if I, if I mess this up, we know, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for the, uh, the two lot, single-family proposal with the, uh, potential conditions as discussed by the board.
Just, uh, I'll wait for a second.
I'll, I'll second that with the comment, it is actually a three lot, not a two lot.
So I'm, I apologize. I'll, I'll make my motion.
It's okay. Got a motion in a second with the.
Can I, can I just for discussion, can we remove the word potential and just have, that the, uh, have it just be the, the, the conditions we discussed, is that okay, Mr.?
Yeah, I'll, I'll strike that as well.
All right, so do we have a motion in a second, do we have any discussion? Can I take the role, uh, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask.
Oh, we have Ted's available as well, too.
Okay, so Mr. Haley, were you here for that whole discussion?
I was, yes, and that's my answer, yes.
You have voted yes, then?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry about that.
All right, great, thank you all very much, we'll, uh, I'm sure we'll see you on the other side of this, and we'll make sure we get you all the information you need.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, um, so continuing in item four, we have continued public hearings, this is eight fifteen Bedford Street, map eighty-eight, lot twenty-three. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped down, excuse me. We have zero Plymouth Street, map twenty-four, lot fifty-two, this is a site plan review on section ten point six for new office, that house building, bathroom, drainage and utilities. I apologize that I skipped over this, but we do have a continuance for this, this is continued from June fifth. And they're asking for continuance to July seventeenth, correct, Mr. O'Brien?
That is correct, I received a continuance, uh, today from the, the owner of the property. Um, I do have good news that we do have updated plans, uh, for this property. Um, but talking to the engineer and the owner, um, they wanted time for, uh, Mr. Tanzi to review said plans as well as the board. Um, so they want to be respectful of your time and review process, uh, in order to continue this to the July seventeenth meeting.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue this to the July seventeenth meeting?
So moved.
By Mr. Geller, do you have a second?
I can second.
Ms. Ross, any discussion? I'll take the role, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Let me ask, okay, thank you. So back to where I was, um, eight fifteen Bedford Street is our next, uh, public hearing. Um, so map eighty-eight, lot twenty-three, so site plan review, section ten point six for new commercial uh, retail building as well as self-storage facilities and other site improvements. This was continued from June fifth, twenty twenty-four as well. Um, just so everybody knows, this is a public hearing, so we'll ask the applicant to give us an update. We'll then ask the board to, uh, provide comments or questions, uh, line with staff, and then I'll open it to the public, um, just remember, if you're, if you're out from the public, please state your name and your address, uh, before, uh, asking a question, so I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Silver's office.
Good evening, uh, Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates, and somewhere around here, Rebecca Baptiste is also here with me. And the client is here as, as well represented, Maggie Teller is here. Um, so, uh, what we, um, what we did is a result of comments that were received, um, based on the site work and uh, basically comments, uh, that came back from, from the board itself at the previous meeting, um, is that we went back and tried to see if there were some revisions that we could make, uh, that would make the, uh, project, um, uh, better in terms of addressing, uh, the items that were identified. So what we thought was we'd bring you, uh, where we are right now, uh, run these by you before we take the final steps to uh, sort of, uh, address all other items. Um, and, uh, in this particular illustration that you see on the screen, uh, that is where we are at this point, um, what we've done is um, the Ace Hardware basically in the front that has basically stayed where it is, there are some minor changes to, uh, some parking and circulation, uh, related to it, but not too much. Um, the storage, uh, facility to the rear um, has gone from, instead of having, uh, a three-story and then, um, and then, uh, three single fam- uh, single families, single-story buildings. Uh, what we've done is consolidated it into one three, uh, story building, which allowed for us to shift the building, um, to the north, uh, so we so basically what we have now is, um, you can see that light green is, uh, the no-touch, uh, buffer, basically, in other words, we've maintained a twenty-foot, uh, strip around the site in which, um, we propose to leave the trees if possible. There will be some trees that, um, are not going to be able to stay because they're either, um, you know, uh, gonna be in danger of, uh, falling as a result of the project, but for the most part, the intention is, is to leave everything that's within that light colored green in place. Um, the other, uh, item is that, um, we have, um, removed, uh, the primary access, uh, from Romney Road that came into the Ace Hardware side. Uh, we have retained one on the rear side of the storage facility, um, roadway there for emergency purposes. That is gated in that area that's not normally left open, it would be a Knox Box kind of situation. Um, so what, um, the other. What, um, the other things that we should note here is that. By eliminating the driveway that was, uh, on on Romney that was going to Ace, the the trucks, uh, and there was a question that was asked about how many trucks there are. Um, I, according to, uh, Glenn from, uh, Ace Hardware. Um, usually he gets like, uh. A couple of, um, large trucks that come in on a weekly basis, uh. That it's really not a lot of truck traffic, because there's a heck of a lot more going elsewhere. Along this stretch. And, uh, so, but what we've done here is we provided. A truck entrance only driveway. Uh, which is when you see the arrows coming into the site. It is not, it does not connect. To the front of the Ace Hardware. There is a difference in elevation. Um, the truck one. Uh, cannot meet the elevation of the Ace Hardware, uh, parking lot. So the Ace Hardware parking lot. Um, is you come in the main entrance further to the north. And then you come into Ace Hardware and you go back out the same way. But for trucks going days hardware, they would come in through this truck entrance, go around the back of the building. Um, make their deliveries and then they just come back around to the north in a clockwise, uh. Um, manner. Um, the other items that, um. Uh, change from this, um, is that we've. Increased the size of the detention basin. And basically, uh, raise the, uh, sort of, uh, level. Of it. We're not as deep into the ground in some areas. Um. There is a lot more storage capacity in here than even what was shown before. There is, uh, an overflow that goes towards the, towards the east. Um, uh, and for those events that, uh, that you see nowhere parked in a. Uh, in a boat around the corner. And then there's also, uh, in front of that, there is a, a small, uh, drainage area, uh, drainage. Uh. Inflow that comes in from the, the driveway that we cannot. Uh, bring into the main drain because of the elevations. And that is a, an area there will be recharging, uh, uh, stormwater in that location. Um. Everything else, um, is pretty much, uh, similar than what was before. The difference on the three-story. Uh, storage facility is that. It's at a, um, a uniform grade going around it. So what you have is you have door access. Um, to units around the perimeter of it, where before we didn't have that. Here we will have that because it's, uh, it's not being built on a, on a slope. Uh, transitioning from. Um, a second level entrance down to a, uh, a first level entrance. So, so everything will be, uh, around the outside has perimeter access, and then the loading area. Is, um, is to the east side. Uh, behind, between there and the Ace Hardware. Uh, so that's in an area that, um, is. Uh, more benign in terms of anybody. Uh, in the area, uh, seeing any kind of activity that's, uh. Uh, happening in the, in the, in that area. So the, the circulation within that, uh, storage facility. Before we had sort of a one-way flow, this can go two-way now. Um, so it's, um. It's controlled by access gates, one that's up on the middle of the, um. The north face there, and on the east face. It's above that loading area. So there's two control gates, and you have to have. Uh, access, um, codes in order to be able to, uh, pass into those areas. The area that's outside of it. Would be for customers, um, that are going into the office area, which would be in the northeast corner. Um. And I think, um. That pretty much is, uh, is is the overview of what we. Uh, what we've done here, uh, in order to try to make this, uh. Um. Work in terms of addressing comments that were raised by, uh, board members. So with that, I'd answer whatever questions you might, might have.
Uh, Mister Silva, it might, oops, sorry, back over.
Go ahead, Mister McDonald.
Uh, just a, just a general question. Um, I I can't recall if it was discussed when I first, uh, saw this. Is there fencing around the, uh, storage area?
Yes, there is fencing around the storage facility itself for security.
And is that just chain link or, uh, what's proposed for that?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, normally, it's a, um, it's a coated, um. A vinyl coated, uh, chain link fence is what's, uh. Uh, the type of fence that's proposed. And then, uh, in the area, in the areas that sort of exposed in the front there where the. Uh, the control gates are up there. Sometimes in there, there's a little bit more of a wrought iron kind of look to the. Uh, to the connecting pieces that, uh, go, uh, on each side of the gates.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much.
Any other board comments?
I just want to say, um. Mister Silver, thank you for making these modifications. I know that it was. A big, uh, request, major request from the town and, uh, you know, town members and. The neighboring business to leave that wall there. Uh, it was a major concern for everyone and the trucks. Uh, driving. I know that that may not, well, actually, you are resolving the truck. Bypass, right? We were, because you're creating a new entrance.
Partially mitigating. Uh, with a truck entrance, uh, the other driveway, as you recall. Um, had a two-way. And was also an alternative, uh, entrance, uh, if need be for anyone. That we did lose that component of it. Um, but this is what, um. The client has asked us to do is to at least allow for a truck, uh, access to the back.
Well, thank you.
But I guess I, I like this. A lot better. I think it complies, you know. You know, site final rules and regulations, the standards for logic projects. Just two questions, um. This goal wants to be a form A. Um, created two lots. And each lot will comply with the zoning requirements. Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, we did not, I don't know, Rebecca, we don't have that plan, correct? Or we have?
Plan? No, I have the data for the information and I illustrate the lines if you can squint and zoom in on your. Device.
Okay, I just, just, I just want them to, you know. We can't have two different kinds of uses on one lot, so that's the, the thing, the two lots, just, just as a reminder, and then, um.
Uh, A and lot B.
And then, and then each lot complies with the open space and and building footprint and all that stuff, so. That's all. Thank you, thank you, though, for making all these changes. And thank you to the applicant.
So, so, yeah, Mister Chair, I got one, one question and 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 also thank, thank you for for listening to everybody and complying with a lot of the stuff. In building B, did that building actually move south or did it stay where it is and just expanded?
It moved north.
No, well, it, it. It moves south, it, it shrunk.
It shrunk, is basically what it did.
Yeah, it doesn't go as far north, so we were able to soften the grades up on the north side, and it it shrunk to the south, so it kind of did both.
Okay.
That's where we recovered, uh, more area for the drainage was by. By shrinking the overall footprint. So if you took the footprint of the buildings we showed before. Um, the the three-story and the three-one-story. Uh, that that combined footprint was greater than what's shown here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I said, well, I say that, um. Let me, let me, uh, just say that I'm not sure when you, we had the aisles, remember we had aisles between.
Yeah.
So, so, but I mean, the overall footprint, including the interior aisles. Definitely shrunk, yeah.
Yeah, I I can see that. I was just curious if the whole building either shifted north or shifted south.
Well, it shifted a little bit south in order to be able to have the. The uniform grade that we're, um, putting the whole building at.
Okay.
Okay, so Mister Silver, is this, uh, I mean, he. You still have to send in the calculations for drainage and finalize the plan and all that stuff. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we have to address the, um. Uh, I guess the town engineer's comments that he had, which were for the original plan. Um, he had, he said he hadn't witnessed tests. Which I'm not sure he witnesses, uh, test pits on every site. But the one comment that he did have, which was related to a, uh. A groundwater elevation that we showed on one of our test pits. It's in a zone that was being removed as part of this construction. So even though he would, there was, I think it was SCA five or something. Showed a, um, uh, an impervious, uh, not impervious, but a.
Restrictive layer.
Yeah, a restrictive layer that kind of had a small perched water in that localized in that area. Uh, that's, that's removed as part of this, because we're actually, the bottom of the basin is, uh. Is a, a few feet below that.
Alright.
So I mean, I gotta go over some of those things with him, and then I guess determine whether or not. Uh, we can satisfy his comments or or not.
Okay, so if there's no other board. Questions at this point, uh, open it up to the members of the public. Is there anybody from the public? That would like to comment on this project?
I'll stop sharing.
You can, why don't you leave it up?
Oh, shoot, I hit the button. I'll do it. Yep.
Just that way, I have somebody from the public has a question right in front of us. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this project? Is there really nobody? Can nobody hear me?
Give him a second. Uh, I'll look at the chat as well as, um. Through the, um, raised hands. Alright, we have a Matt Ranko with his hand raised or in the chat.
Hi, actually, it's Christine Ranko. I'm just using Matt's computer. I'm at seven Romney Road. Um, we want to just say thank you for, um, these updated, uh, plans. They seem much more appropriate, um, for this space and. Um, thank you for taking all of our comments into consideration. Um, also, thank you to Maggie and Yanni for, um. Always being there when we needed a chat, meet, text, Zoom, anything, so we appreciate that. Um, I did have a question about the wall. I just didn't know if I missed it, but how tall is it?
When you say, which wall are we talking?
Um, so there's a, there's a twenty-foot buffer of trees, right? And then it's the wall. I'm wondering about the wall behind the building that would be. Sort of facing our property. Is there not a wall there?
There isn't a wall behind, there isn't a wall behind the building.
There, there is a tiny wall behind the, behind the building against Romney Road. Uh, very tiny compared to where it was. Uh, I lost my share.
Oh, I'll bring it back up.
Oh, that's the, that's, oh, I know which wall you're talking about. You're talking about at the, at the edge of the driveway on your side of the building? It's, it's, it's a small, it's a small wall. Uh, in order to allow for us to tie grades into it. Uh, without going into that twenty-foot, uh, screening buffer. So in most cases, it's, um.
Maybe two feet.
A couple of feet, two, three feet, maybe at most.
Okay, so it's not, um, like a privacy wall, so, okay.
No, no.
I know also we were talking about keeping as many trees as we can and having to get rid of some that are dead or, or, um. You know, that wouldn't be safe. Um. That being the case where we may lose more than we anticipate, or we we may lose more than we'd like. Um. We would like to know if it would be possible for that fence to be a privacy fence. Um, I'm not sure if it's gonna go near the wall, on top of the wall, something vinyl or a stockade. Similar to what Gabriel Construction did on the property next door. They put up a really great. Fence, um, to protect that building viewing from the homes that were behind it, um. Something like that, just where we don't know exactly how many trees are actually going to be. I mean, the twenty-foot buffer is great and it's appreciated, but. If we run into a lot of dead or diseased or dangerous trees. Then that leaves a little bit more vulnerability there, so I didn't know if that was something we could consider.
I I would say, well, we would cross that bridge if we came to it, if there was a. A problem with the vegetated buffer staying. And providing what it does now. Uh, then at that point, then we would address that appropriately.
Alright, we got, we got requests replanting or something like that, so.
Yeah.
I think that can be in the condition in the site plan approval. That would say that we're, uh, with a twenty-foot buffer. Uh, has, uh, some issues that arise from. Uh, you know, in that case, and it's really on that side more than anything else. Uh, but in that, in that case, then it, we could address it at that point.
Okay, um, I understand that, but I'm just saying, like, where there's definitely going to be a fence put up anyways within your plans, um, a privacy fence would just be. You know, appreciated, obviously, for that privacy reason. So.
Yeah. These, well, these are commercial, these are commercial. Projects, I mean, I, I don't know.
I understand that. But this is also a residential home, so I, I, we have to understand both sides of of that, of that story there. So that, that is just one thing. I know I've actually already talked to, um. Maggie about that too, but I I wanted to bring that up, um. And if a fence is already going to be included, even something that had some sort of privacy slabs. Um. Would be, would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Uh, we have a, oh, sorry, I gotta exit the chat. We have a Steve Prisco with his hand raised. Steve, you have the floor.
Steve Prisco. You can only go. You guys can hear me, yes?
Oh, Steve, we're having a a tough time hearing you.
I mean, you're really lawful, but you can speak up, those. You want me to speak up?
Yes, just a little bit.
That's not a problem. Can you hear me now, fellas? Yes, sir. Sorry. Thank you, Steve Prisco, eight Romney Road. Um, and now you can hear me. We're good?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. I want to thank, um, the proponents, Maggie, Teller, and Yanni. Vastikis, um. You know, we've obviously got to be redundant. We had a lot of concerns. And they, uh, they're very nice people, and they they heard. They heard us out and. Met with them a couple of times, and I feel pretty confident that, uh. Uh, that this will be a great project for everybody, including the adjustments, then. Listen to our concerns and so forth, and, uh. We had a great meeting the other day and and, you know, to that point. I had said to everybody, it's, it's pretty refreshing to see that. Minus the emotions, the business part of it, that people can collectively get together. And eyeball one another and and work together, do the right thing. So this was, uh. Uh, clearly a case of that, and I look forward to continuing to work with them and be. You know, good neighbors, back and forth, and the. Both business and personal side. I also want to thank the board. For the walkthrough that day. I think it was vital. Uh. You know, it's one thing to see. Drawings and sketches and concepts, but to, to do a physical walk, uh, walk through the presence. I think really. Helped. Uh, make the alterations and and better understanding of the adjustments that we were looking for. I think that's something that maybe you do that with most projects or big projects, but. I think that was. Very helpful for both parties and for. Everybody involved in this, so. That was, uh, that was great. Um. But just two quick things I had mentioned to Maggie and Yanni that day, what I'd like to see is. Um, on the landscaping portion of this project, that there is. A. Thirty to forty, five to six-foot white pine trees that, at the end of the project. Um, that we can kind of dot them into spots that I think will fill in, as somebody alluded to earlier, that there'll be. I think, uh, Mister Silver had mentioned. That there may be some trees and vegetation that. They're not healthy, and from safety standpoint, they need to be eradicated. And I think, you know, having that, uh, flexibility of having some. White pines that are native to this area here and grow fast and. And, you know, bring in the birds and clean the air and knock down the noise and. Nothing really seems to bother them. I would like to see, and I think, well, I mentioned to Maggie the other day, I don't think that that's going to be an issue. I don't want to speak. For her, but I I want to bring that up before the board while we're. Still in the, uh, the this process here. And I don't think that that is. And I hope it's not an issue. The other thing I wanted to say is with the trucks. There are times pulling out of Romney Road. Especially this time of year. With the competition of Flag Street, you can't get out of Romney Road, and then there are times it's wide open. There's nothing. And my concern is. I hope there's enough room from the truck. Entrance only. I don't know how that's going to be, um. You know, authorized. In other words, who's? Entrance only. I don't know how that's gonna be um, you know, authorized. In other words, who's gonna oversee that? The way that it's set up now, you're gonna be driving behind the back of the building. People are gonna do that. If you don't think they're going to. And I just don't want to see any accidents. A lot of people are flying, you know, we fly down Bedford Street sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour. We had a kid killed on the motorcycle six months ago. Um, I don't know if that's necessary. I think that maybe opening the mouth of the main. Egress there might satisfy what they need. Um. You know, again, I'm not trying to be a pain. I just don't want to see, if, if people are trying to pull out of our ice cream stand, pull out of Romney Road, you've got. A bunch of people pulling out of Flag Street. There were over two thousand people at the soccer field the other day with their big challenge cup. They're from out of town. Uh, not everybody's got great driving skills. Again, I, I just, yeah, I don't know how DOT is gonna feel about that. It's just something I have to throw out there. It's for the safety standpoint. Um, and then the question I would ask, and maybe to Mr. Silver if I may. On the, the uh vegetated area, if you will, in this bottom corner, is that, is that grass that's gonna be all drainage with? Drain covers or s- siltation or what? Is that gonna be grass that needs to be cut or is that? Is that gonna be wide open? Do you understand the area that I'm asking? Kind of like right there. Yep, where whoever's running that little mousy thing.
I would say questions, we'd have to go through the chair.
Oh, okay, whoever can answer from inside.
So how that, how that would be designed and how it would be maintained, please.
It would be designed as grass and maintained that way.
Okay, and is there a, the border of the vegetation that's there now? So that's twenty feet. That stays and then it's grass on the backside of that?
There's an eight foot grout, there's an eight foot gravel pathway that goes around for maintenance. And then everything on the inside of it is grassed.
Will there be enough room that we can um plant some pine trees?
Not on that area.
Well, can we make that area a little wider and do something to give us a little bit more of a buffer? I mean, I, I had asked.
You have a twenty foot buffer that we've left with all the trees that are there. That's where we normally would be doing planting of trees as we showed on the original design.
What about the elevations? Is that so where you're?
We're matching into exactly the elevations that are currently there at those locations. So we took what was at the twenty foot line. And those are the elevations we tied into.
I mean, it's all ahead now. I think anything else, I, I think I feel pretty confident dealing directly with uh Maggie and Yanni, so.
Yeah, I, I think the other thing too is there's gonna be a landscape plan submitted. I mean, so that's.
Correct.
That'll address, you know, where things are being planted, so.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Anybody else from the public?
Do you not see any virtual hands raised nor anyone else in the chats, Mr. Chair?
There's nothing else from the board. Um, Mr. Silver, do you have a date you would like to continue this through? July seventeen too soon or would you like to go July seventeen?
Uh, I, I would say, uh Rebecca, you're online there with me because we have some things that have to get ironed out with the town. Engineer and.
And then he has to have time to review it, so.
You know, we, right, we have landscaper, landscape architect.
What's after July seventeen?
Seventeen is probably the best one.
No, after the July seventeenth.
You saying the one after that one?
Yes.
What's that first meeting in August, Shane? Do you have the schedule in front of you?
Uh, let me pull it up. I believe it is August seventh, but let me just make sure I have the meeting schedule in front of me.
That would give us a chance to get things to Tansy, Mr. Tansy by the. You know, a week or two prior, so we can get.
That would be Au- 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 August seventh.
Okay, do we have uh any discussion on that? Will there be enough board members here?
You can, you see my backdrop right there?
Yeah.
That's where I will be on August seventh. You will have Rebecca. So you're in better hands, actually.
Thank you, Larry.
Dang it, why couldn't you tell me that before July seven?
You're the one that changed it.
Yeah, I did, I did, I did. You're welcome.
Nice. Do we have a motion to continue this to August seventh?
So moved.
By Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
I can second.
Uh, Mr. Rojas, any discussion? I'll take the role of Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
McDonald.
Mr. McDonald, I believe stepped out. Uh, he reached out to me in the chat, but he's still here.
Alright, and I may yes, so. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so continuing on under uh section four of our agenda, we have zero Broad Street map for lot twenty-two. This is special permit, section ten point five, the table used to the A two to construct the duplex in the residential D zone. This is continued from June fifth. Um, I think we've gone through this quite a bit. It is a public hearing. Um, Mr. Ellis, are you with us this evening?
Thank you.
Is there anything, we, we do have the updated plans. Um, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, yeah.
Mr. O'Brien, I mean, I know you, you submitted a draft decision letter and some comments.
Yeah, we submit, we submitted comments at the uh, the last meeting. Um, I think we were looking uh with um potential draft conditions as well. Um, I think the, the only thing that affected things at the last meeting is that we didn't have enough members to. Vote on the matter. Um, as you know, for special permit matters, we need a simple majority of the board. Um, we only had, actually, we need a majority plus one of the board. Um, so we need at least four board members to uh vote in the affirmative. For uh this to proceed. So with three members at the last meeting, we weren't able to proceed with this matter. Uh, but other than that, um, my comments is part of our, our staff memo. Uh, I reached out to Eric Badger and he seems to be satisfied with the um. The septic plan, um, as well as the uh, the questions and Mr. Tansy uh in his last submission letter has.
Go.
Stated that he was uh satisf- satisfied with all the uh changes made to the plan.
Mr. O'Brien, I just question, do you have all the members that were at the last time that this was heard because of the Mullen rule? We're not subject to.
I, I believe so because they're.
Mr. McDonald wasn't at the last meeting, was he?
At the June fifth meeting?
Yep.
No, well, we didn't hear the matter on June fifth.
Okay.
So when a matter, when we don't have, we didn't open up public comment at June fifth, so.
I just wanna make sure that we have members that heard it originally here tonight.
No, I, I, it, I, it's, I stated on the agenda continued from June fifth because that's when it was placed on the agenda.
Thank you for that. I just want to make sure that we're.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I don't wanna go to the, the rule of necessity at this point, yeah.
So Shane, I know we have the updated, well, before we talk about those conditions, you know, we have the updated plan, we have the updated plan. The, the one question I had and Mr. Silver said it's more in his purview that the, the wall can't exceed a certain height. It, in the back, but that'll be addressed through the building process. Am I correct, Mr. Silver? That doesn't need to be addressed by us?
You are correct, Pat. If there's any change to the wall height, let's just say it had to go over four feet. Then it would need to be engineered, it'd have to get a permit and be engineered. If as long as it's under four feet, it does need a permit. If it goes over four feet through the building code, it does require a permit and engineering.
And it doesn't need a fence, is that what you said?
It does not, residential uh landscaping does not need to have uh fencing. Um. You see that a lot with uh garage unders. You've got about a six foot wall on the stairs that go up to the front door. No fences on that, down to top.
And the only other thing is because of the septic system as proposed, Mr. O'Brien. Um, you said we should limit the bedrooms total to four in the, in the building. Is that correct? Two per unit?
Yeah, if, if you want to include that as a condition of it, um, as representative of the plan, I know the plan itself. Um, I believe states that it's a uh two bedroom as well as the communication made by the applicant. We can condition it, but. Um, I would also state that, you know, as designed, it's. He, as designed with the septic plan, it, it could only be a, a two bedroom um on each, each unit could only be two bedrooms.
Hey, any board questions or comments? If there are no board questions or comments, this is still a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this project? So Brian, we see him. I don't see anybody.
Um, I do not see anyone in the um chat nor anyone eh with their virtual hands raised.
Okay, so anything you'd like to add in addition to what we spoke about, spoken about, Mr. O'Brien or, or, or board members before we close the public hearing? Or take a vote to close the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Uh, by Mr. Geller through the second?
Second.
By Mr. Haley? Any discussion to close the public hearing? Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, are you back? I know.
I am back, but I missed the entire presentation, so I will abstain.
And I may yes. Alright, so Shane. Typically, if we have a site plan and a special permit, then we voted on the site plan and the special permit. If this is just a special permit.
This is correct, just a special permit for the use itself. This is there, we do not review this from a site plan perspective. Solely for the, the duplex use within the residential district for a special permit.
But do we have any discussion on a special permit before us? Mr. uh O'Brien provided a draft decision letter without standing conditions. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, do you want to add? Do you think that we should add just because it is designed for four, for four bedrooms and it is only four bedrooms max? Is that something you think we should add or do you think it's adequately addressed in the plan?
Um, I would say it's adequately addressed in the plan and if anything would change, it would require a modification to a special permit. Um, so I, I would say that it, it's, it's, I would say that the way that we write, craft our decisions is based on what's presented. So if anything were to change, it would require a modification before this board again.
So are there any additional outside of the normal conditions that you think we should add that we may not be thinking of?
Uh, no.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, is there a motion to approve or deny the special permit?
I'd like a motion to approve zero Broad Street's uh application for a special permit. The duplex on the property without standing conditions.
By Mr. Geller?
I can second.
Second by Mr. Rojas. Any discussion? So Mr. McDonald, Mr. Um, just before we vote, Mr. Ruling asked, you, were you here when we heard this last? You were here, correct?
Uh, I was, I don't believe I was here on June fifth. Uh, sorry, I'm just, I'm just getting caught up here, uh.
But you've seen this before, right? Because we've only seen it once before. You sat in on this hearing, correct?
I, I actually don't believe so.
You weren't at the May. May fifteenth meeting?
Sorry, I'm trying to pull the whole um package up. A little, little hectic night at the McDonald's. I, I honestly can't recall offhand.
All of the minutes, Shane, that meeting?
For that meeting? Uh. Let me pull it up again. You know, I, you know, Michael, looking up the email, you did reach out and you did have, I believe, you sent me a, a family. Um, so you would, you would definitely, you would have to abstain from this project.
Sounds good.
Alright, but we have, but we have.
We have the, we have the four other members that were available that day. Apologize for.
So we have Mr. Rojas, we have Mr. Haley, we have Mr. Geller and myself that were all there, correct?
Yes, and MJ, MJ was the alternate there, but Ms. Pagon is not here. So we do have four members and we are eligible to have a. Um, vote on this matter.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Um, Mr. McDonald is not voting. Um, Mr. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
I may yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, well, uh, this is Don Ellis. I want to thank you for your, the chair and the town planner. And the members of the board for proceeding for this to go through. I am the owner of the property. Um, and uh all in a shout out for the building inspector and uh. The uh border health, you're a great companies, uh great company to work with. And believe me, I've dealt with other communities, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Usually, Mr. Solari gets beat up, so that's good. Alright, thank you.
I'll have a good evening.
Hey, so to Mr. O'Brien and the board, I, I have a request that I cannot sit out on Zero Went the Street and it may take a while. Could we take a vote change to take item six out of water real quick? Because I know it's only gonna be a few minutes.
You can do whatever you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Um, if, if that would be okay, then I can, I can um. If, if, if Zero Went the Street goes on for some time, um. I, I, I can, I can take off, so. Um, if, eh, the other thing too on Zero Went the Street, because that is next up, item five. Um, would, if Mr. McDonald isn't willing to run it with Mr. Geller, you know. Mr. McDonald, do you have, can you see everything in front of you? Do you want to run the meeting or do you want Mr. Geller to run it or?
I, I should be okay to continue now. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so if people are open to it on the board, could there be a motion to take item six out of water?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Haley? Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. I'll take the role, Mr. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Hey Haley? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I may ask, Mr. Haley, did you vote?
I did not, but the answer is yes.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. McDonald, this is a pretty simple, the. Item that you had worked with Mr. I'm, excuse me, Attorney Rollins on. And regards to it, when I looked at it early, it's a very small two hundred and eighty-two square feet piece of land in Bridgewater. You wanna?
Yeah, yeah, just to reiterate, I sent over some information. Um, this is actually coming from. A, a land court judge uh survey or land court um surveyor. Uh, regarding a piece of property uh that the houses have been built on uh already. Uh, actually in, yeah, on East Street in West Bridgewater, um, of a plan that was uh submitted in twenty seventeen. I'll pull that up right now. Just for. Convenience sake.
Previously, you said probably Shane today and in a lot of you have drafted, this is, this is because the street entered off of. Off of, off of a very small portion of West Bridge Water and they're asking us if there's no approval needed. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, the, the only verbiage that wa- was uh confused me a bit was uh the initial time that uh. We had something drafted that it said that an approval was not required, which made me think of a Form A plan. Um, whereas this isn't really a Form A plan, but more necessarily a vote of the board to state that um. This plan uh does not need endorsement from this body. Um, I know that there's been. Situations of other subdivisions that have passed through Bridgewater. Um, or the, the, the roadway is from Bridgewater and goes into West Bridgewater or East Bridgewater. Um. An example is Bresciani Lane is a, a good example, but um that one did go before. The Bridgewater Planning Board and the West Bridgewater Planning Board. Um. As well as I believe there's another property, I think it's Copperfield Drive, maybe, um, on the north side of town. Uh, but in regards to um, this, i- i- it seems from a land court perspective. Uh, that's, it was a oversight by the. this, i- it seems from a land court perspective, uh, that it was a oversight by the applicant. And they're just trying to correct this. The houses have been built on for lot 10 and 11. And we have all the information regarding deeds and um the plan itself, so it is simply a a vote from this board to state that this, this matter can be uh dealt with. Um, the subdivision doesn't require um approval from this board.
And we're only talking about this. It's 200 and when I, when I read one of the memos, it was only 280 square feet or something like that.
Yeah, that's small. It's the area of discussion is this the only portion of the property that's within Bridgewater. Um, it's a small portion right here. So the way that they uh measured out is essentially 200 square feet. Which is predominantly roadway. I don't believe there's any utilities that go through there. Um, I don't believe the utilities go through Bridgewater. Um.
I think these utilities was reasonable.
Yeah.
Would this, I mean, let's say they submitted this to us, would we even consider hearing it, or would we just say we're fine? How can they enable this if they submitted it to us?
You know, I've, I, if I could find a a good example, uh, you know, I asked around from other, other potential projects that is there, there wasn't really a comparative to this. Um um, there's been projects where, like I said, the the roadway is predominantly in Bridgewater, utilities are predominantly in Bridgewater, where the rest of the property is in West Bridgewater or East Bridgewater, what have you. But this is the only one that where it seems like this corner of the property wouldn't really have any, it's more of a a negligible uh effect on what's currently there. Um, so.
Mr. Silva, there's some of us, there's Larry Stone, he did some marketing theory, I think, right?
I I I chatted with Mr. Silva earlier today about Bresciani, um, but he did come before you guys and ask for permission. So I'll give him uh credit for that.
Yeah, uh, we did Bregiani Estates. Uh, you had that one on there. Did you not have a image of that one?
I have, I have a portion of Bregiani there. I I think I found it, we, eh, not to.
I mean, it, it, we, we, we got approvals in both towns. In West Bridgewater and Bridgewater, we only had a small, like, just like this, we had a very small sliver in the front, which was in Bridgewater. Um, and Bridgewater signed off on it just like West Bridgewater did. Um, the idea is that the roadway and that services the subdivision um is is as much in Bridgewater as it is in West Bridgewater, and I think that's the same as the other one. You see, because I mean, all this here is all Bridgewater. So all of this is servicing servicing the roadway. That's what, that's a condition that we had for Bregiani. It wasn't a lot of discussion uh during the, that public hearing process, but they, but it did go through. The plans that are all recorded have both signatures of the planning board, both planning boards.
Uh, yeah, I guess the difference in this one, it would be that we wouldn't have a building block of endorsement, but necessarily a a letter crafted by staff, signed by, I would say, yourself, the chair. Um, also reflecting a a vote of the matter, um, that would go back to the the land court, um judge or surveyor for that matter.
But your recommendation and our attorney's recommendation is that we don't need to see this and we can sign off.
Yeah, we don't have to proceed with this as a definitive subdivision. Um, like I said, it's already been built, built upon, um, as well as gone through the land court process. Um, it's really just a a correction at this point um that we're hoping doesn't happen again.
Do you want to bring up the letter that you drafted?
Um, let me pull up. See, can you see it now, or are you still sharing the other screen?
Is that something you want to vote on tonight?
Oh, uh, yes, if you could, we could vote on this matter um tonight, uh, unless there's any, you know, further comments. Um so it would just be the, the, the subdivision is prior down, pre- primarily in West Bridgewater has been endorsed by that planning board and the portion is minimal. We had approximate and that the determination is that the subdivision does not require approval. So we could add language does not require accrue, uh, approval pursuant to Bridgewater subdivision rules and regulations.
And Mr. Uh, uh, excuse me, Attorney Rollins has seen this.
Yeah, we had a, we had a back and forth um in terms of uh the language. This is draft two of the matter. Um, one of the concerns they brought up to Attorney Rollins was the language uh at first stating that uh approval not required. Um, whereas that would be language typically that we would use for an A and R plan. Whereas the, the way that we've kind of, I kind of finagled it was that the subdivision does not require approval. Um.
Why don't we just say this the term right, that the subdivision does not require any additional action by law?
Can you repeat that, Pat?
This subdivision does not require any additional action by the Bridgewater Planning Board.
Sure.
Make that a capital T at the beginning. Of the sentence. No, 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 no.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm good. Good. I got you. I thought you wanted to be the, like, the Ohio State. And then I'll change a planning board member to chair. So if you're comfortable with those changes as well as a a date change.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're fine with it, but does DEP, now, what does, does that DEP, DPW have any issues with them tying into a Bridgewater Street? Has it been shown to them? Should it be shown to them before we sign along?
I I would say that.
Did they tie in, did they tie into Bridgewater water or West?
I would, I would say that there are houses there, Pat, and I don't think that if they, if they took a check, then they took a check, but I I I doubt that it would get to this point in 2024, seven years later after the subdivision, that there was any uh utilities. So I I I, my understanding of all utilities, and I, and I did reach out to um the uh, who the property was prepared for. Um, I don't know if the, I don't think um, the engineer of record, I don't, I don't think it was stamped by an engineer, but it did state the uh uh, I think owner at the time of the property that took this one over um stated to me over the phone that utilities should be predominantly going through West Bridgewater.
Okay, any other board questions or comments? Do we have one motion to uh approve your letter or endorse your letter, or what would be we looking for?
Yeah, I I I'd say, uh, yeah, I would say endorsement of the letter um as provided, um, as, as shown on the screen. As.
Do we have a motion by night?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll make a motion to endorse the letter.
I'm gonna come to endorse line by Mr. McDonald through the second.
Second.
Mr. Geller? Take the role. Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Ross? Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask. Yes. Alright, so um thank you for that, Shane. Alright, so we'll go back to um the normal order, which is item five, public hearing, which is a new public hearing. Um, Mr. O'Brien, if you want to bring up the legal lines and I'll sign off and we can um open that public hearing up. The only, the only thing I have is minutes for tonight. Do you need me to sign back on later or do you?
Uh, I would leave it up to you, Mr. Chair, for your willingness to come back.
I'll, I'll sign off that way. I'm fully recused and I will um see everybody at the next meeting.
Alright.
You have enough members to vote on the minutes if the, if the board decides, and that's.
We'll have, we'll have four members. Uh, so yes, if the board feels comfortable, we can proceed with them.
Alright, thank you, Ron.
Have a good night, Pat.
Alright, Mr. Vice Chair?
Alrighty. So it looks like we have uh Zero Winter Street, a definitive subdivision approval of a uh four lot subdivision with a previously approved preliminary subdivision. Uh, and the applicant may begin.
Oh, we need to read the legal ad and, as shared on the screen, Michael, Mr. McDonald, it's okay.
Good thing. Uh, public hearing notice from the planning board on Wednesday, June 26, 2024, at 6:30 PM. The planning board will conduct a public hearing via Zoom on an application subject to Bridgewater subdivision rules and regulations to the approval of a four lot subdivision with a previously approved preliminary subdivision. The subdivision proposed by Oleary LLC located at Zero Winter Street, Bridgewater Math, assesses map 75, lots 21 and 93 on 9.47 acres. The application and plans were prepared by Silver Engineering and are on file in the office of town clerk and the CD office and website. All interested persons are encouraged to attend Bridgewater Planning Board.
Yeah, just to, uh, on top of that, Mr. Chair, it was advertised in the Brockton Enterprise on uh June 12th and June uh 19th.
Thank you very much.
Other than that, Mr. Uh Larry or Rebecca, floor is yours.
Hi, this is Larry Silva, Silver Engineering Associates, and Rebecca Baptiste is with me as well. Um, this is on Winter Street. Uh, and this was a um a subdivision that was brought before you as a preliminary uh in order to uh run by some uh issues that we, because it was a little bit unusual, we wanted to make sure that uh we clearly understood where the board was coming from. Um and uh so we, even though we were pretty far along in design at the time, uh, we decided that going the preliminary route was a better way to go uh in order to uh address uh some of those items. Uh, in particular, so it's called Hampton Avenue. Uh, and it's a four lot subdivision uh on the uh northerly side of Winter Street. Um, east of Bedford Street, uh, it's basically behind um, the area that is uh developed as 722 Bedford Street, which is the large brick building that's on Bedford Street, and then there are a number of houses on either side of the entranceway uh that come into uh, uh, come into the project. Uh, it's the um, so the subdivision was brought before you. It has the uh, the configurations that required under the regulations for uh, for the hammerhead within uh the complying cul-de-sac. There's no waivers being asked for anything there. And uh, we did have some um grade, grades to deal with because we have a a s- a rise that comes up from Winter Street, goes up and then comes down uh rather steeply as it goes uh towards the north. Um, the items that we came before you to discuss in um in order to get uh basically a decision from the board uh were primarily uh because of the, the unique um zoning uh of this area, there is a uh zone line uh which comes across um residential C, residential B uh line comes across the site. Uh, in the preliminary uh plan, we showed a house positioned on lot one which would have been on the business B side of that line. Um, the board, when they voted to approve the um when they approved the preliminary subdivision, uh, they noted that the positioning of the of that house uh could not be in that location. And there were two ways to deal with it. One would be either to take and put the house into the residence uh C side of the lot, which is where it currently has been moved. Uh, and then the other way is to actually uh try to uh have a zone line change, which would give us maybe more use of the area that is uh currently in the business B district. So we, we're basically doing both while we're looking to get approval of it as we see it. Showing you that we can put the house in that location and we may just as, we may just put it there. Uh, but in order to uh make sure that we have other options, um, should there be a desire to build a house in a different position? Uh, we are actually pursuing uh trying to adjust the business B zone line uh to make it more appropriate for uh for this area. It's really uh, when business B was actually uh established, um, it was interesting. They, they did it, so it was 600 feet, I believe, back from the southerly side of, um, I mean, the westerly side of, of uh Bedford Street. And on the um easterly side of Bedford Street, I believe it was 800 feet. So what we're gonna look to do is to try to uh adjust it in a way that makes more sense with how the properties along that stretch are being utilized. Much of the business B area is actually residential in nature. Um, and we'd be looking to try to change it. Um, but that's independent of what we're asking this board. Because uh what we're saying here is, is that the subdivision, as we're showing it, uh, is compliant with the uh comments that were made um back when we presented the preliminary plan. Um, the drainage uh for this uh subdivision um i- is co- is collected and conveyed in accordance with the regulations to the uh, to the far end of the cul-de-sac uh where it is uh brought in and, and it's then throttled uh over towards the uh the wetlands uh that are in that area. Um, it's um, there's really no nothing unusual about this, the site itself, except for the, as I said to you, the the steepness of the grades and the, on the, on the front portion of it. Um, to the north side of that entrance coming in, there is the ability to grade over the property line with a grading easement on the right, on the lefts, on the left side coming in. Um, we would be putting on a wall along that stretch in order to uh adjust the um uh, the elevations from the roadway side to the existing house side. Pretty much, um, that's, that's uh how we plan to lay it out. We've shown you the uh proposed house locations. Uh, you know, where septic and reserve uh systems will probably be located on the site. How things would be graded. And uh, I think you saw a lot of this detail before. Maybe there's just a little bit more detail than you, than maybe you had uh when you looked at the preliminary plan. Uh, but with that, I'd answer whatever questions that uh you might have.
Uh, Mr. Silva, if you are able to uh change the zoning line, which I, I think does make sense in this case, um, would you be looking to just add additional units to the subdivision? And if so, does this proposed plan before us, is that already accounting for, already accounted for in this uh proposal? Would you basically just add them more to the settlement of the lot without shifting the?
No, it would be, it would still be four lot subdivision. All it would be doing was taking away the constraint of placing the house uh on the higher grade side of the lot, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any other planning board questions or comments?
Now, that was, that was my question, Mike, actually, that you were gonna, like you asked, I was thinking the same thing.
Uh, Ms. Rojas, Ms. Haley, Mr. Mr. Haley, sorry.
No comments.
No comments here today.
Okay, anything from town staff, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Ruling?
Sure, just from a, a, we did provide a staff memo, um as part of this project, as well as uh the town engineer, um which was attached to it. Uh, so we did receive a letter uh dated June 10th, 2024 um regarding some comments uh from the town engineer. Um, as noted, he did talk about renaming the drainage easement to a utility easement. Um, talking about sightline, uh, top and bottom wall of elevations, uh, wall design as well as some other uh comments on the various sheets uh of the construction detail plan, the erosion control plan. Um, let me just pull up my comments as well. Oh, you have them. Look at that. Thanks, Rebecca.
I do. I can go right up to yours if you'd like. You had some good ones too. There you go.
Sure. Yep, um, Phil, that's just a, that's a general question that we've been getting off town, uh, around town. So um, we do provide some uh typical recommendation conditions, uh, as well as we just want to uh adhere to the compliance that the property is in Aqua for Protection District. Um, so we just asked the applicant if they could provide a narrative um on a future plan, um, just demonstrating compliance, or if the applicant wants to present it now, as well as a a utility plan uh showing uh expected locations for uh, um, I know gas lines are difficult, um. Um, I know gas lines are difficult, um, but minimally underground electric. Um, because that is something that we typically um require to be underground for subdivisions. Um, so, um, but we have, we've provided some good comments, as Rebecca said. Um, and we just hope that they're, they're addressed uh prior to um the board proceeding with this.
Yeah, our, our plan would be is to give you a response letter. Which would address each one of the comments that were identified. And uh, and with that, we would hope that uh at, at that meeting, you'd be able to uh feel comfortable to vote to approve at that point.
Sure thing.
And I, and I would want to point out to you, though, when you talk about the aquifer uh area. Is that if you look at the size of lots, um, the lots are not uh small lots uh that you would. Be allowed to do in a residency uh area. Uh, these lots are fairly large. And an aquifer protection areas, septic systems are allowed to be one bedroom for every ten thousand square feet of area. So um, in this case here, all these lots are sized in order to allow for a uh. Uh, a larger home, a four bedroom home for sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Brian, Mr. Silva. Uh, any comment from Mr. Rui? Okay, uh. I believe at this point, Mr. O'Brien, to be uh appropriate to open up to public comment if there is any.
That is correct. Um, so if anyone has any um. Public comment, um, please raise your virtual hand or in the chat. Um, I have uh Janet's iPad. Janet Hanson, would you like to speak? Alright.
Yeah, yes, I would. Sorry, I had trouble getting my microphone.
Sure.
I just have a, a, I guess, a question. Um, Mr. Silva was talking about trying to get the zoning changed, you know, moved the, the business. Be moved that down so fit um in the residential C. How can it be in our town or, I mean, to have a developer? Set the boundaries of a zoning and how, how does that work that he says that they're trying to get that change, but? I, I, I don't know if I'm asking my question properly.
I can, I can address the matter um just based on the comment. Uh, so any. Any zoning change would have to go through town council. It's not like a flip of the switch. Um, so typically, um, there are different ways for. A applicant or a town counselor or citizens to proceed with a zoning change. Um, so the applicant would just have to follow the proper matters uh that are required for any zoning ordinance or zoning map change.
In the past, in the past, we have, there haven't been, since we went to a council style of uh. Of government, uh, there haven't been that many zone line changes. Um, I have been involved in a, um, um, several of them. Uh, one in particular was uh where Bernie's Liquors is located. Um, if you remember, that store was basically sort of a grandfathered business lot within an area that was mostly residential. Um, there was a zone line change in that area sponsored by Sandra Wright. When she was councillor in that area. Uh, she brought it before the council. Uh, we provided her the information uh for what we were looking to try to um. Change it to. Um, she was satisfied that it was a good change and made sense. She brought it before the uh, uh, the council, the council. Um, uh, voted uh to accept the application, sent it out for review uh by. Other boards and then get their recommendations back and then acted on it to make the change. There um, a lot of times that's how it's happened. There's only been maybe half dozen, maybe. At most zone changes since in the last. Uh, ten years maybe or more. Um, but in this case here, you can imagine that um taking just an offset from a roadway, a certain distance. Um, is not necessarily um consistent with how land gets utilized. Um, and if you go further south, South Business District had one at one point. Where they had a sixteen hundred foot offset from Bedford Street. And that actually went into the subdivision that was off of South Street. So that went into Lyman Place and the folks on Lyman Place. Um, petitioned way back then uh to get the, the line moved to, to make it more consistent with where business should be. Where residential should be. So it's a process and we're going to ask. Um, we're gonna meet with a councillor for this area. And maybe councils at large in order to see if they could support a uh, an article to change it. It, but we can still build a subdivision regardless. But it's, it would be better to have the line changed uh to make Lot One a little bit more flexible.
I, I can see that a little bit. I, I just, I guess overall I get concerned sometimes when, and I'm not pointing fingers. But to have a developer decide that they don't like the zoning and they want to change so they can have something fit, so, but. I know it has to go through a process, but um, I can see when you look at the line, it makes, you know, sense, but. Um, I, I just had that question, you know, because I have concerns about, you know. Developers wanting to change um zoning to fit their needs and. Uh, that's what I was just asking. I'm not pointing fingers or anything.
No, and I guess, but the flip side of that too is, it's uh to go to um. Um, uh, the change to residential C to bring that down. Uh, further, that actually is a less intensive change than to uh. Say that you wanted to push business B further into the.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So uh, I don't have any other uh virtuals hands raised nor anyone in the chat um asking any questions.
Okay, um, so. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Silva, but I'm assuming you would probably want this to be continued um as you continue to work out your zoning change.
Well, no, not for the zoning change, because.
Just, well, just in general with the, the co- the uh town staff, you know, commentary too, yeah. Do you have a date you would prefer for that?
Uh, Re- Rebecca is the date person right now. Rebecca, we, we, we want this to go to that same meeting or not?
Sure, let's do the same meeting. That'd be great.
Uh, when we, when we meet, same meeting, we meet August seventh.
Which one, the July one or the?
No, August seventh.
August seventh, yes.
And that way we know we can wrap everything up at that point. We have everything, we'll have everything addressed. Uh, no other items that'll be outstanding and uh it should be an easy one for you guys.
Makes sense to me. Uh, just any other board commentary before we move forward with the motion or? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to continue to the August seventh meeting?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I can second, yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rojas?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Alright. See you in August.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I believe we're moving on to uh board business at this point. Uh, we have minutes for March sixth and April seventeenth. Uh, is that the date?
Yeah, I would say that, I would say that I, well, I'm gonna have to cross out April seventeenth. I'm still going through them. Um, it was kind of a more intensive meeting uh. With, I think it was the first meeting that we had eight fifteen Bedford Street on there, so I just want to be. Uh, I'm, I'm looking over kind of the public comments a little bit more through the minutes, so that'll take a little bit of time and should be ready for the July seventeenth meeting. But I think we're okay with the March sixth uh minutes if anyone from the board has any questions or concerns.
Okay, sounds good. So just the March sixth, uh, March sixth mi- uh minutes, excuse me. Everyone okay with that? Uh, motion approved a minute?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Geller and Mr. Haley. Uh, take a vote, uh, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Oh, you know, actually, Mr. O'Brien, I, I believe I forgot to vote on the last item myself.
For uh Zero Winter Street?
Yes, uh, I, I would be a yes in that case. I don't know.
That's, we can, we can correct that, Mr.
Okay, thank you.
That's no problem at all. It, 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 it does happen. I should have corrected you, but I, I, it's, we'll understand that it, the continuance occurred and that you participated in the meeting.
Okay, perfect. Uh, board items for next meeting?
Um, so we got some continuances uh from the last meeting. Um, as you know, Zero Plymouth Street uh will be on for the next meeting. Um. And I believe that is one of the few things. I think we might have something else, but. Um, it's gonna be a relatively shorter uh July meeting. Um. So, uh, one of the items that we did, uh, I did talk to Pat about this. I know he's not in attendance, but. Typically, uh, the board in July. Um, looks to reorganize, so I guess we'll have a discussion of reorganization of the board um for the seventeenth. Um. So um, that'd be election of a chair, vice chair. And I guess we could do a clerk as well, typical of our rules and regulations. Um, so if everyone's comfortable of having that on that meeting, I'll include a reorganization on there for the uh seventeenth.
Uh, Mr. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. We, we currently don't have a clerk, do we?
No, and I believe the last time we had this discussion, uh, I don't think anyone wanted to be per se a clerk. Uh, the way that I've always, the way that I've always treated uh. Or seen as the clerk in the matter is the backup to the backup. So um, I would say that if, if, if need be, we have a clerk to um. Be the, the vice chair of the vice chair. Um, but I'll leave that up to you um as a board to see how you wanna uh sort that out.
If I remember correctly, when Mrs. Garino was serving as clerk, I believe she also handed the minutes. Is that correct?
Yeah, the clerk is tip, the clerk is typically um third string as well as the minute review person, but. Uh, we've always kind of, I, I guess, is for, through my tenure here, we've always equated just everyone on the board as. Reviewing entities for the minute, so I just kinda, but um, I'll, like I said, leave that up to. Um, y'all to decide if we want to elect someone or we just continue what we're doing.
Okay, excellent. Uh, any board or committee liaison reports?
Um, I think Pat's our liaison for CPC. Uh, I don't think Ray a Jimian. Is here. Um, so I guess in terms of board and committee liaison reports, we don't have any at this time. Uh, in regards to planner reports, um. No new real updates. We're just kind of doing, doing the, the typical things in terms of some conformance reviews uh. Making sure everything kinda. You keep the wheels rolling, so um, but like we said, we appreciate your time today for the concept plan presentation. Um, you know. When it comes to new zoning, um, we'll do our best to help out in terms of the review on that process through anything with the. The CBDS and uh the form-based code process. Um, so um. We're, we're happy to help. If you guys have any questions on our end, we're happy to um proceed with, you know. Review and other, other issues that we may see in town, so on that, that's what I got.
Okay, uh, once the last step adjournment. Uh, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Haley, and second by Mr. Geller. I'm assuming we don't need any discussion, so uh, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rojas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Alright, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Enjoy the holiday. Take care.